Six thirty-one and I'll call this meeting to order six thirty according to that clock. Um, chairman's comments, I, we have a lot of information that we have to get by in this meeting. So I don't have anything to you, Bill?
Nope.
George?
No.
Public comments, and if you are on the agenda, um, let's save it for when we call you. And I think what we want to do is do the tax rate first. So no public comments, can you, yep? No, we'll, we'll throw you in on the new business. At uh, some point where we can get you out of here before we get rid of the other stuff. So we are going to set the tax rate. I believe we opted for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of reserve fund balance to buy down the tax rate to three seventy-six, three dollars and seventy-six cents per thousand on our municipal side, which is the only one we can control, which is down from last year's considerably, not, not the three sixty-six, three seventy-six, but the, the overall because convales down this year as well, uh, cause they owe us some money.
Amazingly, yes.
Anything you guys want to say about that?
I, I think that, uh, the, the only comment I think warranted for public, uh, consumption is that we are looking at the unreserved fund balance of six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. There's a discrepancy in what the DRA reported, uh, which where they improperly, maybe that's not the right technical term, but they improperly took, um, money that we had coming from one fund into another, and they actually subtracted that from our, our unreserved fund balance. So we in fact believe that they're showing we have three hundred thousand some on dollars. We know we have six over six hundred thousand, thus we felt comfortable with the one-twenty. Also recognizing that there's a lot of things that are going to go up next year, uh, and we didn't want to get too aggressive, but we still wanted to be able to provide some relief to the town, uh, as well as keeping some level of sort of linearity on the tax rates. So that was our effort as the BAC and the, and the Subcommittee on Taxes.
And that keeps us within that three to eleven percent that the DRA says we should maintain to at least get by for three months.
Yeah, essentially allows us to have the money to cover expenses if for some reason we didn't collect any tax revenues for, for months. So that would, it keeps us in a good liquid position.
Okay, well, signing tax warrant tonight, um, which we've already done when we pass papers around. So it's been signed.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the BAC for their work in this and especially dealing with the DRA. And the DRA finally just said, well, we don't know what the heck we're doing, so just ignore it. It's pretty much what they said.
Anything more on the tax rate? Okay, we have updates Perkins, Holt and Grover Lane. Just so people know, um, Grover Lane and, uh, bring a petition warrant article to town meeting. And I think that's how they're gonna have to, um, get it through the town, if the town okay's it at town meeting, uh, to take on that road of three houses. Uh, Holt Lane still subject to the same. Perkins Lane, uh, the only update there is, we can have you file a right-of-way for us to go on to your private property. So it has to be, it has to be in the deed that you give us a right-of-way to go up and around your house where the property line ends. From the property line ending all the way up to the driveway to turn around and come back. And I'm not saying that that'll take care of the problem, but it's a step in the right direction. But that was, that was, um, given to us by our, a town council.
Right, the change is that, you know, it's like we used to plow driveways and then the state said, no, you can't plow, plow driveways because it's private property. It's the same thing. We can plow up to the property line, but we can't go past it unless you basically give us permission to in a, in a right-of-way waiver that we can process. Otherwise, the state says we cannot go on that land.
Can you get me something in writing that states that, that I can present to someone?
Yeah, it's state law, it's not us.
Yeah, it's state law, it's not us. I mean, the, the lawyer, our town council suggested that this is a way that you can do this and we can all be okay with it. Um, that does not take Kent out of the picture for not maintaining the rest of the road, but at least then you have us be able to come up there if we do maintain it, come up there, turn around and get out of them.
But if you need a letter from legal, we can get you one, even though it is state law and any attorney you talk to would know that.
Statement, and, and I've got a name to address going back and a statement that they can, my lawyer can focus on rather than quotations from meetings.
Okay.
He should know that this is state law. I mean, if you got a lawyer that knows.
The state of what you're saying, I just disagree. Thank you.
So who's supposed to provide the details so that the easement can be written up?
That's her job, that has nothing to do with us. She has to put it in her deed. Her lawyers have to create it, file it with the Registry of Deeds and it has to be filed in their property file.
Yeah, can you, if you send us your legal contact, our legal, our lawyer can send stuff to them.
Anything else on Perkins, Holt and Grover? Moving on, update complaints Hudson Road, Rebecca Way and Moran Road. Um, again, we talked to the lawyer on November fifth. Hudson Road, we have to figure out what properties are what and get a letter out to them. Um, as for their junkyard being established there. Um, Rebecca's Way is a dumpster that's overflowing. Um, evidently someone has neglected to pay for their dumpster and they're not picking it up. So it's overflowing, but that's a health concern. We do have a letter here. If anybody wants to see it, that'll be sent out to the owner at the end of the road.
I need to get Pete Caswell to sign the letter.
Yeah, as health officer.
Yeah.
Another thing we can do in the meantime too is, um, I've, I've talked to Pete about this before, but I'm already a health officer. So if you guys want to, I have to stay out of it, but if you want me to appoint me as the second or assistant or I don't care how you word it, that would give me the, the route to, to do some of these letters and sign them and get them out versus waiting for, um, council appointment, uh, meeting and then them waiting for, to get the letter and then, you know, sent out.
Yeah, I'll make a motion right now if you want.
I've also been told that Mr. Rowe has been working on his new driveway and that he's in the process of putting the gravel road up.
Now he's cutting trees down to quote a temporary farm in.
The, um, where it looks like a new driveway is logging operations, it's temporary. It's just like the one you got, same thing. When he's done, it comes out.
That's on Hill Road or?
On, uh, Hudson.
Hudson Road.
So I will make a motion that Ken Case be appointed as the, what?
Let's say assistant health officer.
Assistant help officer.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
I, pub stain.
All right, so you're all set.
So I should change this, change this letter and have you be the signer?
I can sign it or Pete can sign it. This one here, I want Pete to consi, uh, to just to sign it because we discussed this before we elected me.
Yeah.
Um, so, and I will attempt to write the Mike Rowe and the other one. That needs to happen as well on Rebecca's, I mean, Moran Road. Cause Moran Road, we have the same thing, a violation against zoning, somebody's camping out there. Um, one thing I do want you guys to note is they do not have a fire permit and they're not getting a fire permit. So under no circumstances can they have a fire over there. So if at any time you see something and you can take a picture of it and send it to myself or George Clark or Mike Connolly, that'll be taken care of right away. You got it.
Yes, it's a pain, but nobody can hear you online. Anywhere.
I did want to add that I have tried to reach out to Laura regarding the trees because the cutting continues within that twenty-five foot buffer.
Yep.
Um, which you're aware of, um, but I haven't gotten a response. Uh, there's a chainsaw still stuck in a tree. There's ropes, there's, he's cutting them down way to the ground so you can't really see them, like it's, it's, it's just a clear path. Um, it looks like he's trying to make a clear path from the backside of their house to that easement to go to Flanders. Um, but it's not even five feet off the property line and they're supposed to leave that twenty-five foot buffer alone, but I have tried to contact her with no luck.
Yeah, and that twenty-five buffer is right in their deed and I believe it's in Laura's as well. Um, I've also reached out to try and talk to Laura, um, got a call, at one point, and somebody was screaming in the background and she said she'd call me later and I haven't talked to her. So that's where that's at. Cause I wanted to know, I wanted her to know what we were doing before we were doing it, but at this point that's irrelevant. Um, as soon as I know that the letter goes out, we will go over there and document any trees, any shrubs, any, anything that's been cut, where they can't cut, and we'll also address that at that time as well.
Yeah, and if that's deeded, if that's in your deeds, you could actually go after them for monetary damages.
Right.
I'm sorry, what is your name? Um, so we've, we've been through this with her already. Uh, she removed some of Sheila's shrubs when we first moved in and Bruce, you know, was like, you can't do this. And she's like, I know, but they were dead, you know? And so we've, she knows. Um, but at this rate, can I ask that she replaces the trees? Because what the damage she's doing takes years to regrow. And I, I just want, you know, I, I, I work really hard for my privacy and it's just, it's, it's wild to open up my barn door and see somebody standing five feet away from me. And it's like, I moved out into the woods, why are you cutting all our trees down? You know what I mean?
I mean, unfortunately, the way that's gonna have to happen is you guys are gonna have to get your own, uh, council and go after her, um, as, as we don't, uh, basically go on people's private property.
Yeah, we can't enforce deed.
So that'll be an after the fact, but we will document it all so that you have something to, to, to go to court. And she'll have to replace them or, I mean, if you really want to get nasty, you can call DES and they can come out and document that she's taken out stuff that she's not, although it's not in a wetland. I don't know if they would get involved, but.
Is she cutting on your property? Next to.
Their deed, George, says that between their property line or their driveway and her house or her yard, um, there's a twenty-five foot buffer there that neither one of them can cut. They can cut them as if they're hanging over the driveway or impeding getting in and out of the driveway, but that's all. Nothing else can be cut in there. No shrubs, no nothing. I mean, they can't just go pick and choose what they want to either. That's not what the deed says. All right, anything else on any of those Hudson, Rebecca, Moran Road? Uh, that I can wait on, tax we did. New town garage, we're gonna put off. Let's, let's do, um, Nicole and.
All right. I don't know how much you guys are prepared for this, but I had sent a letter on Thursday to the Select Board objecting to a form that we received from the Planning Board in regards to the Morning Light Farm Subdivision, the PRD that's before the Planning Board. They basically, they've made up a new requirement that Town Council has said is not a requirement. And I received a message from Town Council saying, I've told the Select Board to ignore it, so we're just gonna ignore it. However, today I received the notice of decision from the Planning Board. And the notice of decision has a condition of final approval on it. So if this condition is not met, then Randy's PRD doesn't get final approval. So we are not comfortable with you just ignoring the requirement. So the requirement says that the Select Board, approval of agreement and release for properties located on a private road filed at the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds along with HOA documents once all conditions have been met. So the letter that I sent last Thursday outlined all of the problems that we had with the form that Christine sent us to fill out. Because I just received the notice of decision this afternoon, I very quickly went in and I took what I thought was a very bad form to start with and corrected all of the incorrect information, removed the pieces that were overstating what this document was trying to do and hopeful that you guys will sign this so that Randy can meet the requirements and have his PRD.
Is that this, this form?
Uh, that's the one that I locked for Ken. I'm sorry, I didn't bring more copies before the meeting if you want to take.
I've, they've all got one, I just gave them one.
Oh, how did you make copies?
Yeah, I'm pretty good.
Um, so this, um, if we were not town residents and concerned about how much this town has to pay to legal counsel and we were an outside developer coming in, we might actually appeal this decision to the ZBA and go through that whole rigmarole. But instead, we've just decided that if you will accept and sign this tonight, we will lodge our complaint with the Planning Board and make sure they don't try this again. And we will just go on our way, but we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place right now because of the way that the notice of decision was worded.
And notice from council was just to, for us to, um, not, um, put this into their requirements.
You're right.
I don't know how we go about that. We gotta make a motion to not, not use this as a, as a requirement for the subdivision and the subdivision, um, what am I looking for? The approval letter went out already and it's in the approval letter, but.
Yeah, the notice of decision.
Yeah.
Right, so what?
Basically what we want is to not
enforce that.
Enforce this portion of it and have it in writing here so that, um, they don't have to come back.
Right, so what's wrong with just the not enforcing bit? That's what the attorney had recommended.
Well, because what happens if the board changes and then they decide because, well, they didn't act.
Too late then, yeah.
We're gonna act on it.
That's probably too late.
We wanna kind of.
But yeah, so.
So Bill, what happened was I just received the notice of decision today and the wording of the notice of decision requires this document as one of the conditions for final approval. So if the, if the Select Board won't sign this document, then the PRD
Yeah, this helped.
is not finalized.
Yeah.
And then this could come back up again later.
All right, so we'll do this document. I cannot imagine why the Planning Board would not fix it. I mean, the, the problem was they'd already sent out the notice of final decision and there's apparently some problem with just saying, oh, wait a minute, we're not gonna do that part, so.
So my understanding, Bill, is that because it, the notice of decision was already issued, the vote was taken at the last meeting, the only way to correct it is for us to file an appeal to the zoning board of adjustment. And then the ZBA can remove that requirement, which the, that just churns the whole system further.
Yeah.
And like I said, you know, we're all residents here. We want to make this happen in a seamless way as possible without incurring more legal fees on either behalf of my client or on behalf of the town. So we're willing to
Yeah, sure.
just go with this.
Right, this way, yeah. Okay, you're the one, only one that has to sign.
What, what issue does the Planning Board have with this?
The issue.
There were some changes, there were some changes to statutes that go into effect next year. And my understanding is Christine was concerned that they implicated private roads, but the changes only implicate class six roads. And there was, my understanding from Town Council was there was a junior associate at their firm that reviewed the issue and gave incorrect information to the Planning Board. The Planning Board used that incorrect information to vote on the project and issue this notice of decision. And so now we have this requirement that's not a legitimate requirement.
Okay.
Right, and George, the Planning Board understands that and they wanted to correct it, but because the decision had gone out already, there's a problem. So we can sign this and then we can see what happens. Or Ken can sign, but I'm not, I'm speaking for Ken, you talked to Ken.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with signing it and I don't see what, um, I've already talked to Nicole in length about this, going back and forth to try and resolve this issue. Um, I don't see why we, we can't do this and if you guys, uh, agree, we'll take a vote and we will, uh, vote to sign this and take it out of their
Yeah.
um, requirements for that subdivision, because everything that this talks about and more is in here, but, um, is already on the subdivision plans.
Hmm.
So basically it's being redundant about, um, a bunch of stuff that, that doesn't need to be on here.
I make a motion, you sign it, Dan.
I'll second.
Well, those in favor?
Uh.
Those opposed? Nays. Okay, where do you want me to sign this, Nicole? Says witness owner, witness chair, select board.
See you tomorrow. Yeah, I can witness.
That's what, that's why I had to trade businesses in the planning board itself.
I used a real pen, not my little Stamper thing. So if this.
If, if I may, should we have a copy of that signed on file?
I can give you a copy, but I have to record this with the, um, other PRD documents. So I can go back and make a copy and send it to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So this document.
Electronic copy would be fine too.
Okay, this document, I actually was going to come tonight anyway and suggest that the Select Board does not use this document for the future. If you need these, there were a lot of issues that I had with it as you could see from the letter that I sent last week. And as far as I know, this form has not been approved by the Select Board for use in Temple. And so I would just urge you to, if you are gonna create something like this, I don't know where it came from, so I can't really give you a good suggestion, but make sure legal reviews it in detail and make sure that it's not overstepping what it's really trying to do.
Yeah, and of course, this is a Planning Board thing, not a Select thing though. The Planning Board's the one that put all this stuff into effect, right? And we can't tell the Planning Board what to do.
Planning Board said that this is the Select Board's responsibility and then.
Assign it, but.
Right, so, but the Planning Board has also not created this document and approved it.
Well, next Planning Board meeting, this needs to get discussed in more detail.
And the Planning Board can't tell the Select Board what they can do.
So we shall take care of that, the rest of it.
Yep, okay.
Um, anything else on that? Moving along. Uh, farm vehicle registration rules. We have an issue, um, I don't know if you guys saw the email from Stacy, that they can't register ATV's with a commercial, commercial plate anymore. They have to use a farm plate. And then what constitutes a farm? Um, basically if you have a chicken, you can have a farm. Um, does that mean everybody that has a four-wheeler is gonna be riding around town on their four-wheeler because they can get a farm plate?
Excuse me, Ken?
Yep.
This has been going on for years and years. And I bought a, uh, RTV. I think it was in two thousand two or something. And I had to get agricultural plates for it.
Yep.
I had a discussion with, uh,
Stacy?
No.
DMV?
No, what's his name, it's over on, uh, 101.
It's over on 101, what does she do?
Off of 101.
What does she do?
Christine, she has a big farm out there. They used to have dairy calves.
Yep.
And she told me that I couldn't register this vehicle under agricultural because I didn't have a farm. And I said, and I said, well, what consists of a farm? And she says, you have to have cows or sheep or something like that. And I said, well, do we have any cows or sheep? And she says, not anymore. And I says, I don't either, but I still have a farm. So you have to define farm.
Right.
But you can get these plates for almost, anybody can get these plates. You can't drive, you have to register the damn vehicle and you can't go more than ten miles from your address.
Right.
So I've had this RTV for twelve, fifteen years now. I've, you can drive on the main road, but you can't go over thirty-five miles an hour. That's the rules.
And you also have to have a, uh, triangle on the back.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I don't have one of those.
That was another one of the requirements, um, but there is a, um, the, the, everybody's changing from commercial to go to farm. And it, not adhering to any farm guidelines. Anybody can call themselves a farm and, and put their thing on, so. I did send this up to see if Laura had any idea what to do with it. Um, because we didn't and the state has no, uh, they have no opinion on it and neither does Fish and Game. Um, Fish and Game only does trails and, uh, stuff. They don't do road crossings or any of that. So they had no opinion on it either, so that's kind of where we're at. And if we can put this off to the next meeting, at least it's in the works and, um, we'll put this up under old business for next time.
Yeah, so the state makes some law, some rules that nobody cares about, including the state. Perfect.
Yeah, and then, I mean, the other decision too is, is, is if we want to put a policy into effect that, um, you know, to use the agricultural, uh, plate, you need to have a farm and what is a farm? So we would have to include that in our, uh, paperwork here so that they would have to check off something that says that they are a farm and they adhere to that, similar to signing a building permit. You're, you're signing your life away that you wrote true stuff, so, and then at least it would take. Uh, Stacy's issue is, um, she, she doesn't know if she can or she would be, uh, personally liable if somebody had an accident or somebody did something, um, from giving them a plate that they weren't supposed to have or however that's gonna work, so.
Seems unlikely if she did it in good faith, but whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a farm too. I raised deer on my farm. There were four of them in my deer field.
Yeah, I got a deer farm?
Yeah, I got a deer farm.
I have a deer and turkey farm.
Bears too.
And a dog farm.
Bears visit you too, right?
Bears come and visit.
Yep.
I have no problem with bears.
All right.
Haven't heard them lately. They were around, could have had a coyote farm.
So we're gonna ta, table this, put it under old business for, uh, next time. Um, the other thing I think that should be under old business is town hall microphones. Did you ever send an email to, uh?
Uh, yeah, Keith was gonna check and see what they cost.
Okay.
I have, I have something to say about those.
Go ahead.
I've rethought my position on the, having the battery-operated phone, phones. I will agree that if the, the other select board members will take care of these phones, I'll take care of getting the chairs up and put back.
Okay.
So it's up to you guys. So it's up to you guys. I didn't wanna spend extra money if, if you guys found out that it was too, too costly.
We don't know yet. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're waiting to find out first and then we'll have that discussion and we'll, we'll move on from there. All right, next on the agenda would be Town Garage, we're gonna put that off until that comes up at town meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, Tri-Town Ambulance Association dissolution. Um, Wilton has finally sent a letter for the Ambulance Association to be dissolved, basically it's their building. Um, and they named me and George as Temple's duly appointed commu-, oh no, we, then we need two duly appointed, um, community members to represent Temple on this board uh, in Wilton. Are you willing to do this, George?
Yes, I just don't know how I got selected.
Yeah, they.
Well, evidently you were at one time on the association as well as I was.
I wasn't. I did, I know you showed me.
Yeah.
The building.
That counts.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. Th- this is what they came up with anyways, and then we have to find two members, so if anybody's, uh.
I agree to do it.
Available to do this, um, and has an interest, please let me know. Um, basically, it's monies from, uh, Wilton that's owed to us because that building was part of the association. And what happened was the association was dwindling, nobody wanted to take care of it. I got appointed president and then nobody showed up to any meetings. Um, not because I was the president, because everybody was bored with it and didn't know what they were gonna do with it. Um, and then Wilton took over and, uh, went to court and got this done, so somehow or another they owe us a percentage of whatever the fair market value of that building is, and I think it's our job to make sure that we get that
Yep.
uh, from the town of Wilton. So we'll send them a note that we've got two people, waiting for two more, and then we will move on with that.
They want four people.
Yeah. Not to make it any harder, they get two and then they want, and then they want four. Uh, next on the agenda is occupancy permit for Anderson's, uh, which is Wheelin's New Garage.
Yeah.
I was over there, I signed off on that, so he did work on it, so it was a conflict of interest for him to sign off. So that's all set, so I move that we, uh, sign a certificate of occupancy for twelve, New Hampshire Route forty-five, Wheelin's Automotive.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Need to get a date stamped, too.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, Steve doesn't get a real signature.
Nope, uh, we have a, uh, approval for town hall fee waiver for a special event, which is the, uh, chip race done by Sohagan Lions Club every year. I motion that we waive the fee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Done. Um, the only thing I saw.
On that application that you guys have to sign on it.
Okay.
Review and approval of revised policy and procedures, which is the financial policies.
Yeah, yet again, there were some errors in it that got, I corrected. It's basically the same with the errors fixed.
So we wanted
Yeah.
To save that for the next meeting?
If you want to, or you can just approve it, okay.
Then we have meetings, we have, um, town hall microphones. Morning light, we just did. Um, we're having an issue, and I don't know if, uh, anybody wants to say anything about this, but we're having an issue, um, with the ZBA Chair. Um, she doesn't seem to be proactive or returning anybody's emails or setting up any meetings. Um, we've had that meeting for a letter from the Marshes to the ZBA that I think we're gonna have to renotice, and then we'll probably end up doing that on our dime because we, they've already paid for it once. Um, and, uh, Deb dropped the ball on getting that going again, so I don't know what your feelings are here or how we could fix this. Um, I've had Carol try and reach out to her by email and still no response. Do you wanna say anything? Okay, so she hasn't heard from her either.
She's still in town, who knows, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Steve is still here, I mean, I, I expect unless, you know.
Um, well, of course, since we went to an elected ZBA, we have a, if we had not done that, we could've fixed this problem.
Are you on ZBA though?
No, not anymore. I was.
Who's the vice president of the ZBA?
I don't know.
Has anyone reached out to him?
Who is?
Ian and Richard Redding emailing. Cause the, the last thing that we dispatched was a sidewalk was planned.
I know.
Um, so a, a sidewalk was planned at the Marshes, I think sometime in September, uh, and the Marshes asked to reschedule because of a health issue. Um, and so at that point, I, what I remember, uh, we were emailing back and forth, coming up with a couple dates. Um, me, Richard Redding, and maybe one other was like, alright, this day or that day, let's pick one of the two, you know, and, and from there, um, I don't believe that Pickman replied and Deb did not reply, and that's been it.
Well, I mean, this is bad because the courts are involved in this, and the courts are not gonna put up with this forever.
Yeah, I mean, especially from us, cause we were the one that started all this and now we're dropping the ball, and it doesn't look good in our favor, that's for sure.
Yeah, I mean, the best thing would be if the ZBA elected a new chair, that they could do.
Yeah, and I, I think that Pickman was open to that. Um, I feel like we've talked about it before, but um, yeah, August, actually, um, one of the last communications, um, some dates that we were trying to make, have, no, August, September. Yeah, it was September seventeenth, I think, was my last email on, did we decide on a date yet? And just nothing, so.
Okay, so do we wanna send out one more email to Deb and, and say, look, this needs to be taken care of within?
Like, immediately.
Immediately, um, or, or we have to reappoint?
Well, we can't.
Um.
They're elected.
Yeah, but they would have to do it themselves.
May I make a suggestion?
So.
Um, you don't necessarily need the chair to call a meeting, so if you guys call a meeting and she doesn't show up, or even if she does show up, you can have your vote then. And the point of the vice chair is to step in when the chair is not doing their job. So if she doesn't come to the meeting, then Alan would run that meeting. Right, and if, if for some reason you can't get Alan, then whoever your next officer in charge, which would usually be a secretary or treasurer, I don't know if you have a treasurer, not? Okay, you don't have a secretary designation like the Planning Board does, so do you only have those two officers? Okay.
So, we're, I mean, obviously, we're gonna do a sidewalk for anything, but once we have, you know, an actual meeting, I think we have to renotice everything and um, so yeah, we can have a meeting and then talk about dates and confirm that, then do the sidewalk, then you know, go from there, but.
Yeah, I think someone's just gonna have to call a meeting, and if you need to elect a new chair, that would be the time to do it.
Right, and hope you can get a quorum, it doesn't, sounds like it's gonna be hard to get a quorum even.
Uh, myself, James, and Richard Redding. Basically, and then Alan, so.
Well, if you can get four of you, that's the quorum that you need, I mean, you only need three, if it's three out of five, so. I mean, that would, that would work and then you could move on from there. All right, so that's what we'll do. We send that out tomorrow?
Send.
You in tomorrow?
What am I doing?
You in tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, send that, send Deborah. This Marsh issue has to be um, dealt with immediately. And in the meantime, if you could send out an email just to set up a meeting and get something going, at least then you have a meeting set up and we can figure out what we're doing with the Marshes and let them know. Okay. Uh, I don't have anything else, I believe, um, December ninth is, uh, Tuesday, our meeting. I go back in for lower back surgery on the night, so I will not be there for that, this meeting, so we trust you guys will.
Okay.
Um, take care of anything that needs to be done. Do we have anything else under other businesses for anybody? George, no other business?
Nope, got nothing. All right, we're on to minutes.
Yeah, I got it. Approved minutes for October twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five.
I had no problem.
I had under page one, uh, under anniversary fund. Um, second sentence starts out two applicants, can we do two W O instead of the two? It just doesn't look right in there.
Two applications.
Two applications. And then, uh, down on Grover Lane, um, second sentence again, case noted that the road would need to be brought up to current zoning specs first, um. I mean, that's my, that was my opinion, but I'm not sure how that's gonna work with, um, legal, so if we could just put, uh, brought up to current zoning specs. And then on page two or four, under review and approved building permit for Grimes Glen Farm. It says TH Board, it should be the board approved, the small shed. That's all I had. Motion to accept as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else? For anybody else, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all.
All right. Now you get this, uh, getting money for the roads.